Chase, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Right, Mr. Common Council meeting for May the 28th. Start out by asking if everyone had a chance to read the council minutes from April the 23rd? Does everybody have a chance to look those over? Motion to approve? Have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved by Goodman, seconded by Smith. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and it is five to nothing. Okay, and the Board of Public Works and Safety Minutes for April the 11th and 25th are information only. It's on the council. You can read. Moving on down, Communications. Fireworks. We've got 4th of July coming up again. Folks, I'm going to set the date for the community fireworks.
Ted, if I may enrich you, Monica Klon from the American Legion.
Oh, hi, Monica. How are you?
I wasn't sure who was going to be here.
Come right on up and say a few words, would you, about the fireworks? By the way, thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm just here to represent Post 36, respond to the fireworks, and I understand that the city donates a portion of money to the fireworks, so I'm here to again pass for that.
Yeah, that comes out of everybody's pocket that's up here. Why don't you go?
Now there's 10.
No, what was it? Was it $500? We... Five thousand dollars? Five thousand dollars? You can't get fireworks for $500?
Well, you could if you were just shooting off your house.
Maybe you can get boxes, a box of sparklers. Yeah, I believe it was $5,000. Anybody like to make a motion to continue to do that?
It's in our budget.
It is, but we still have to make the motion.
No, it's not in our budget.
It's decided every year.
Okay.
Setting the date, making sure that the Legion and every, that the council is aware of the date that they want to set, and the rain date, just in case, correct?
The date is July 3rd, the date is July 1st.
Okay. Sure you want to make the motion to spend $5,000 even though it's in the budget? Just keep the meeting going, please.
I'll be happy to make one. I feel bad.
A motion from Smith to approve the $5,000. Again, this year. Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilman Heidi. Those who approved signify by raising your right hand.
That would be six oh?
As far as the dates are concerned, is everybody in accord with the dates? The primary date is the 3rd, and the backup will be the 4th? Okay. I have a motion to approve the dates. Are the city offices going to be open on the 5th?
On the 5th, yes, we're just going to be closed on the 4th.
I move to approve the designated dates, July 3rd, backup on the 4th.
Second. Smith approved, Goodman made, Smith made a motion, Goodman seconded those in favor, and that's unanimous also.
Thank you.
Well, listen, and seriously, thank you for picking up the sponsorship of the fireworks. Now, this is, what, the third year that you guys have done that?
I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was kind of all over the place that you guys did that. It's a natural home for it to be at the Leva. I'm sure appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget meeting. Eight for the budget meeting.
We usually do that at the end of July.
First of July.
First of July.
Second, if you guys want to stick with that date, it would be the second Tuesday. If you want to stick with the same that we've done.
That'd be the night? Be the night?
Yes. Yes, the night.
Like at 4:00? Is that what we do?
We do it at 5:00.
We had done 5, but, I mean, if you guys want to do 4, that's fine, get y'all together a little earlier.
Well, we set this meeting, and if we don't finish, we try and do it two weeks later before our actual council meeting.
Is there any problem with going at it an hour earlier, 4:00? That kind of put it in line?
We should be able to make it to 4:30.
4:30? Yeah, we might as well leave it at 5:00. He pushes you to that.
I work until 5:00.
Do we stop? Do we stop the camera?
Is that what you said? Okay, so July 9th at 5:00? Does that work for you, Chase?
And then we need to continue it and go prior to our normal meeting in July?
Yes.
It's something 9:00, 5:00 p.m. by the meeting.
Yeah.
9:00 to July, and then 23rd.
Alternate would be July 23rd at... Do you want to do 5 that night as well? Or do you want to do 4 that night?
Let's wait and see after the night, and see how much more we have. That's a good idea. We'll set the alternate date for the 23rd in the site on the...
As I say, typically, we've gotten through everything on the budget night, so... Any changes to how we handle that agenda as far as the order that we do it? A lot of, sometimes I will get a request from one of the guys because they have another meeting that's set at night.
Doesn't matter. Orders have you had.
All right. Pizza on the man.
Just as long as everything's in order.
We both don't have pizza on the man.
So everything's in order?
That's right.
Okay, I think on the agenda, whether he follows it?
It was a lot easier.
It was. Because we had Peter.
No.
Okay.
It was nice when you wanted...
It went with it. Yeah. The lieutenants had everything in order. Okay. No public hearings, no unfinished old business. New business? We have tax abatement renewal, and we've got American Axle. I see that the folks from American Axle are here.
Yeah. You have Dean Bundo with my manager.
Dean, you're in there. I'm probably in there.
So we are excited to really tell the board here how far we've expanded here already this year. We had a $75,000 capital investment for 2019. We've already gone over north of $100,000. We got a new 10 and 1/2 ditch case line that wasn't here last year when you visited that we transferred from Three Rivers because they're getting more business. And for 2020, we've already got $3 million capital investment, already slated, and we've probably got north of $5,000. We got a new line coming in for 31XX, which is a new general motors platform that we're going to be doing some of here. So very exciting here. We have 53 people on the wall right now, so we're already two ahead of what we thought we'd be, and we'll be north of 60 people next year. 2020, we'll be three full ship operations. Nice is that we'll be closer to 65 people, and we're looking to expand another truck out because of the material that's going to be coming in and out.
Wonderful.
Obviously, American Axle's here for the long haul. We got a new president of our division who's really focused in on our plan. The $16 million investment that we made last year, we've done very well. The plant has quite a turnaround here in the last year, so we're making money and we're getting, working new business, and we're just tickled to be here and part of Rochester community and hope to continue longstanding. We're not going anywhere.
Well, Dana, as we told you last July, it's tickled to have you here. Impressive open house that you threw.
It was fun.
Shota, Jillian and I went to that open house. You going to do something this year?
Yeah, we have another plan for...
July, in the end of July. We got to see how this upcoming machine movement will be, but we planned it about July, mid-July.
We'll open into the community again, so anyone else out there that sees us, come on by, stop by, take a look at our facility. One thing we've also done, and we're really trying to work with our associates that we have, is each quarter, one thing that we kind of, not be mandatory, but that's really taken off, is doing something with the community. So, you know, we did something with Matthew's Church, so we're kind of partnered with them. We're partnered with the Humane Society this quarter, so we're really looking to dig our heels and sink ourselves into this community moving forward.
Wonderful.
That's the expectation.
I don't know. I mean, you've certainly got a multitude of things to participate in. I don't know if you've heard, though, that there is a group of churches that are putting together a youth center downtown for youth, and we get you more information on that. I know that, I believe they're looking at the former Fascinal Building as where they're going to look.
Yeah, get us information, we'll be glad to, you know, give a partnership if we can.
We'll get you some information on that. That's a need we've had for quite a while. Again, you guys, you guys class act. You put on a good party last July, and got a good bunch of people. Are you having any trouble getting folks?
We're not in trouble getting folks. Some of our lower level jobs, we have a lot of people that bounce around, some of our temporary associates, so we, I think the whole community struggled with that because there's so many jobs available. But our high-end people, we have had zero turnover, and they're even getting more and more trained. We're sending them to Three Rivers because that's our assistant plan. I worked there for seven years, so I got a lot of friends up there, so I'm getting our people trained up there. We're sending them to robotics training, so our highly skilled people working. It's the lower level people that we're just trying to promote that atmosphere and kind of keep them. It's better than it was last year, but just like everyone, we still have a ways to go.
Now, are you working direct with any of your customers now? Are you still Tier 2 within your family?
We're still Tier 2. Everything goes to Three Rivers right now. And that's the way it's going to stay with, the kind of the vision of the, of our plan is to just focus on machining parts of Three Rivers, and Three Rivers will do all the assemblies. So they're taking on all the machining, and we're getting new machines, and we're kind of just setting it to them.
Do you have any questions for Dean? Dean, what was your last name?
Bundo with a V. V E N D A L. Of course, I apologize, I didn't bring my cards with me. But I'll get some up here.
Anybody care to make a motion regarding the tax abatement renewal?
I move to approve the continuance of the abatement for American...
Second. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Clevinger. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, thank you for being a part of our community.
Now, you have two associates.
It is.
Yeah, a couple of associates already would probably love to go and pick some time there.
I'll email you, sir. Will you do that, please? Boy, you are on a roll today. You must have won an election or something. You're very vocal tonight. Wow.
Weird days.
Okay, we have another tax abatement renewal for Top Industries. We have, we don't have anybody from Top here. We've got, we've got the SB 1 on the...
They provided all of their paperwork for review.
Well, I...
It looks like on their estimated, at least just going down the list, number of employees, they estimated 61, their actual is 86. Looks like their salaries are about double what they estimated.
Well, and they've certainly had phenomenal growth. They've even expanded into a second business, racing part of their company, and as you all know, they acquired Gertie Engines as part of that move, and it's been a, it's been a good move for all involved. It was good for the new business that Kevin Birchmire was going into, and it was good for Gertie's engine keys, the Gertie name out there in the industry. Anybody have any comments about approving the continuation? Yep, continuing. Okay. It's moved by Goodman, seconded by Heidi. Those in favor? Is that right? Is it Rochester Metal Products or Advanced Magnetics?
Both of them, actually, and I'm just looking through.
I thought...
Advanced Magnetics had sent their paperwork, but I did not.
Yeah, but we approved it last meeting.
Yeah, that was the one at the last meeting.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. So, yes, Rochester Metal Products, and then you have...
He just sent some updated numbers.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Derek did, yes. And then your Top Industries and Rochester Metal Products.
Industry tops.
Top Industries, yeah.
Rochester Metal Products, similar situation. They've expanded down there, added a line, brought in a new piece of equipment, continues on a growth pattern down there. One of the few foundries that are still in operation in the Midwest. A lot of foundries have closed. I know they're continuing to do work with some of the folks we talked to. Metaphil or organization, they're still doing work for them and such. Things are going very well there. Do we have that menu sheet? I could use all the other Shota.
That's what I was, yes. It is actually mixed up in the middle of theirs. It looks like their estimated SB 1 was 281 employees, their actual is 293. Salaries, 11 million, 11,800, actual is 12,600. Their number of employees retained was estimated and actual 281, and their additional employees was estimated at 6 and actually added 12.
Very, very well.
I think they're kind of in the same boat.
I entertain a motion to extend their abatement. Moved by Heidi, seconded by Goodman. Those in favor? It's unanimous. I'll tell you, folks, you're not going to find three more to serve these companies. This is pretty easy tonight. You're in good company, because I'll do two folks.
Yeah, we do a lot of work with Rochester.
Okay. Moving on now, we've got an ordinance to approve. It's an, it's an ordinance that involves the Water Department, Water Utility. It involves billing. Shota, would you like to explain what the issue is? Would it be the billing of the Water Department?
Actually, I think I will divert that to Attorney Perkins.
Oh. Okay. He handles deceased situation.
He reviewed, he reviewed it for the Water Department, for the board.
The, look, we had this discussion once before, when we talked about the water board.
Is it the Water Department? Well, wouldn't you present?
I didn't know what I had to add to what we talked about before.
I know, but this is just the ordinance to basically allow us, and I got to find it.
You want to give us a reader's digest version of what it is?
There you go.
Yeah. The ordinance is designed to fix problems the Water Department was having in terms of how to, how to deal with accounts that were still in the name of deceased individuals. And after I talk with the Water Department, what I like to do is...
Yeah. Basically, gentlemen, we were having issues where folks would have their name on the water bill, and then they'd pass away, and then the family would just keep their name on the water bill, or whomever picked up the issue behind them would keep the deceased member's name on the water bill. Well, first of all, you can't have a contract with a deceased person, so, and that made us a little left-handed right out of the box. So the ordinance rectifies that, and it was accepted by the Water Department. Do we?
What I, yeah, the resolution I included in the packet front that the water board actually approved, and essentially it's just, it's in favor of the recommendation to modify the Common Council Section 52.104 of the Rochester City Code to permit the water board to disconnect the water service upon reasonable notice to the property that is served to an account of a deceased customer, and then...
Well, theirs was a resolution. Ours would be an ordinance.
Yours is an ordinance, yes.
So we have to, we have to vote that through. Copy the ordinance? Would you like, somebody like to make a motion to read the ordinance?
Do these need to be read one time or three times?
Three.
I believe that we read the ordinance first reading in its entirety.
Does that go ahead? Moved and seconded, as Smith made a motion, seconded, goes in favor, and it's unanimous to read the ordinance in its entirety. So I can go first.
All right. Ordinance number 3-219, an ordinance permitting disconnection of water service for accounts of deceased individuals. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Rochester has determined that accounts for water service should not knowingly be held in the name of deceased individuals. Now therefore be it ordained by the Common Council of City Rochester that Section 52.104 of the Rochester City Code is hereby amended as follows. Additions in bold, deletions in strikeout. 52.104, disconnection of service. A, when the water board orders the water of any consumer shut off for nonpayment of charges, supply shall not again be turned on until the consumer shall pay all charges due, and in addition, pay a turn-on charge in the sum of $50. However, this sum shall be $75 if the customer service has been shut off one time in the previous 12 months, and $200 if the consumer has been shut off two or more times in the previous 12 months. The delinquency herein before mentioned shall be held in construed demeaning any and all bills due, the water works from the consumer, whether the bills shall arise from the occupancy of the same or different premises. B, past due notice threshold shall be $25. C, upon learning that an account exists in the name of a deceased consumer, the Water Department may send a letter to the occupant of the property receiving service notifying the occupant that service will be disconnected if a new account is not created for service to the property within a reasonable time as determined by the water board.
Discussion. Do I have a motion for the second reading of ordinance 03-219?
Title on like some...
Second. Moved by Smith and titled only, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Okay. Second reading by title only, please.
Ordinance number 3-219, an ordinance permitting disconnection of water service for accounts of deceased individuals.
Okay. Any discussion? I would move to suspend the rules and have the third reading. I'll make that motion by title only. I'll second. Moved by Goodman, seconded by Heidi. Those in favor? Okay, sir.
Ordinance number 3-219, an ordinance permitting disconnection of water service for accounts of deceased individuals.
Those in favor, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Ordinance number 3-219.
Make a motion, Thompson seconded. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moves us down to department heads.
Good evening. Last month, April, we had two truck fires in Rochester Township. We had one dumpster fire in the city. Grass fires, we had six in Rochester Township, one in the city, one in Richland Township. Vehicle fires, we had one in Newcastle Township. Calls for smoke, we had one in the city. Auto fire alert, we had one in the city, one in Richland Township. Gas leaks, we had two in the city. Accidents, we had two in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, one in Newcastle Township. Medical assists, we had 12 in the city, 10 in Rochester Township, four in Richland Township. Lift assist, we had two in the city. Animal rescue, one in Richland Township. Cancelled calls, one in the city, three in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Had a total of 57 calls, and we conducted one drill. As promised, I did bring the tools, but I'll just leave them there, and after the meeting, if anyone wants to look at them or ask a question, looking more than happy to answer your questions on the battery-operated AMK rescue tools.
And you remember those are the, what we used to refer to as the Jaws of Light?
Yep.
You've had to use those three times now?
Twice now.
Twice, I'm sorry.
Twice now. We had the, the car was rolled over in a ditch on 400 North, I believe it was, and then just this morning, Fremell South of Town, two casted seniors getting ready to go on their senior trip, picking up a couple more students, turning off the highway. The semi did not see his turn signal or his brakes. I'm on, saw the pictures on Facebook, but hit it pretty much right in the, the B post of the car. The guys were able to get the tools off the truck. I was behind the first truck, probably four minutes waiting. I was on my way to work. This happened about 6:30 this morning. Waiting on two of the guys to get there, so we're four minutes behind the rescue truck. They were able to grab these tools, turn them on, and had the door off by the time I got on scene, so pretty amazing. You don't have to worry about getting the generator, throwing the breakers on the truck, pulling out the cables and those, open the compartment, grab them and go. It's...
They're phenomenal, aren't they?
Then with, when we were in the ditch, we were way down, had to put ladders down so people could climb up and down. It was pretty steep, and just being able to hand the tools down without having the hydraulic cables running to them and going on both sides of the car. I said it was inverted. Actually, the cutters were inside the car. We had to cut the back of the seats off so they could see the woman's leg was pinned in her car door. As the car rotated over, her door opened, her leg went through the door, slammed back on her, on her leg, so we had to visually see where her leg was before we started cutting it, once we got the car lifted, so. Not saying we couldn't have done it with the old set, but this definitely made it, made it so much easier.
Not only easier, but quicker.
Yeah, I said, and even, even in the dark area, of course, I said I wouldn't show you, but they have lights right in the forward handle, so as you're in there working in the car, you can see, so, I don't know if you can see that, but right in the handles, settings there.
I think I saw that in Terminator, looks like.
Pretty easy, pretty quiet compared to what, you don't have a generator running, don't have all that extra noise. The batteries do have a quick check, where I can check and check the level of my battery at all times. They're quick charge, I got two sets. They're a lithium 6D, 60 volt.
What kind of light are those batteries? They'll last you quite a while.
Yeah. We cut, when we were training, we cut three cars up and didn't miss a leg. So, yeah, Brian was up.
Your lights are still on.
They'll go off, but the only thing bright I've had all day. Depending on your questions...
Got to be one of the best purchases we've ever made. That's...
It's up there in the top 10.
Are you looking to get another set?
I am. I think it's well worth it. I'm going to try a couple other departments that don't have a set or portable set. I'm going to look at selling our backup set and purchasing. Now, I'm not going to take the set that's plumbed to the rescue truck. That'll be a default. I mean, some, these have been great so far, but there's always that chance sometimes it would fail. Or like I've said in the past, we were going to have that incident on 31, we had multiple cars. These will be able to go up and down the highway. The one with the truck will be tethered closest, so I'll have to use some strategy, but I think it's going to make a difference down the road. I said sometimes you invest the money, and it's not just for today, but it's for, it's for the life you're going to save down the road. Not to be cliche or anything, but that's the way we need to look at things.
For clarification, looking to sell the old set that has the cables and that works off the generator and such.
Yeah, it has a gas-powered, so it's gas over hydraulic.
It's more cumbersome, heavier, bulkier to move around, and the new set would go on our new fire truck?
Correct.
Which is kind of a segue. We're 120 days supposedly out. Are we still on?
Correct, yeah, we're still on. I got a call last week, so they should be putting frame rails together this week or next week up in Charlotte, Michigan, and then once they have... next week up in Charlotte, Michigan, and then once they have way through that process, they will call South Haven and Spartan, or Spencer, I'm sorry, will go ahead and they've got the jig for the frame and they'll start constructing the body. About six weeks in Charlotte at Spartan, and then they'll drive it to South Haven where the body will be almost eighty percent complete from what I understand, and they'll start putting pieces together. In September, we should have a fire truck. Pretty exciting. We can make several visits up to South Haven. If any of you are interested in going up and seeing the construction and fabrication that goes into one of these trucks, please get with me and we'd be more than happy to take you up. I know John Little, the Board of Works, has gone up already for our pre-visit before we selected the company, and he was impressed, so if anyone's interested, by all means, please get with me and I'll let you know what our schedule is for going up there.
Any questions for Tom? Thanks, Chief.
All right, good test, thank you.
Chief, shots?
For the month of April, we had a total of eleven accidents, ten of those were property damage, one was personal injury. We issued a hundred and thirteen warnings, ninety-nine were traffic, fourteen were for city ordinance. I told eighty-seven offenses, forty of those were traffic, forty-five criminal and two juvenile. Fifty-five public case reports for the month, seven hundred and thirty-one calls for service, thirty-nine lockouts, eleven tow vehicles and twenty-six people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were lodged for. On the next page. Other than that, we've got the triathlon coming up in June as well as a parade, so those will be big ticket items for us. Oh, he's on deck. He didn't write it for that, I'm making sure we've got that. The tape and all that good stuff, nothing as exciting as Joel's wife or anything. Can't alter fire.
Can up a tree, right?
Yeah. That's about it. We've gotten both our Durantos in that we ordered. We had those in within forty days, took them up the house here, they're back, they're on the road. The, the second one, we just picked it up today, so they're on the road in service and good to go.
Any initial reports on the new stop sign out at Ryan's House?
Yeah, I about ran it.
If you only about ran it, you're doing better than about.
Yeah.
If you're coming, if you're headed north, it does sneak up on you a little bit?
It can, yeah. Both the, the stop ahead sign going south, and yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow at our department meeting. Maybe we can get some traction on the road or something like that, but.
Do, do we need a bigger stop ahead side? Because there is a stop ahead side out there.
I think when you're heading north, there is a stop ahead side, but I think there's a tree that takes a little, little.
Yeah, smaller, smaller trees that kind of blocks it just a little bit, I don't know what. Yeah, I mean.
Maybe we need a larger sign, stop.
It, it's made a difference.
We can do it. Four-way flashing red if you want. I'm good with it.
I know, I've heard that suggested, if you want a stop sign.
And, and I mean, yeah, maybe move something if we can, maybe post markings on the road like we did at Thirteenth and Fulton would help, maybe. But yeah, I've, I've heard both, I've heard, can't see it, I've heard it helps, so everyone's got their opinion.
The ones I've heard complained are the ones that are usually speeding down the road.
That's what it was meant to do, kind of get that traffic under control, so.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
The calls for service, let's see, we jumped up quite a bit compared to the prior three months. Is that typical?
More brother.
The weather getting better or?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for any other than stop sign locations or?
The firearm with obliterated marks, just like scratching off serial numbers, is that what it is?
Yep, round off serial numbers. That's illegal.
Oh, you're not supposed to do that?
No.
When did that go in?
Yeah. I don't, no. I don't want to hear anything.
Thank you, Steve.
Asking for a friend?
For those of you who didn't digest what they had in this report there, there is a friendly ban that's being enacted. Geez, I don't know. They're not listening, they're not listening. Okay, Randy, Randy, wait. How you doing, Randy?
Good. Good. Fourth Street project, we've kind of been delayed by weather. There, we, pretty much all we got to do is the final dirt preparation and seeding and then they'll strike the street and then we have a punch list we'll go through. On our federal highway project for the sidewalks, we still got to meet with Commonwealth, our meeting was scheduled last Thursday, but kind of delayed.
All heck were a glues last Thursday, yeah.
Right. Then fifty-fifty sidewalks, we still got two walks that's got to be done, and it's been delayed because of the weather. But then we also have new, we have eight new applications that we're going to have to review and get quotes on to figure out what we can finish this year with what funds we have available. And then I've been loading and chipping brush for the past three days, so.
Is that where you've been?
Yeah. That's all I got.
Any comments on the loading and chipping brush?
Oh, nobody made attention to it yet.
The doggers, if you will, the passersby, yeah. You guys deserve a pat on the back, I was going to give, let Lenny also pat on the back of his group. It's tough work right now, and to work and keep going in the pace that we're going, move along very well. With all the traffic and everything, you're doing well. We were very fortunate not to have any injuries during the event, and now the goal is to make sure we don't have any injuries in the post part of it, and you guys are doing well. Worked through their holiday, and we're going to keep, keep working at it. I might as well mention at this point that we've been through the park a couple of different times to make evaluations. We have some trees that we designated need to come down along with the ones that have come down, and we have an expert from DNR coming in later in the week to evaluate the rest of the trees in the park. The park needs an electrical refacing. Our electric lines and stuff were blown down, knocked down. We found that there's a lot of patchwork in the electrical end in our park going clear back to when the Round Barn Festival was there. Bill Walsh analyzed it today, and we're going to take this opportunity to clean up all of that and put the necessary electrical underground so that we never have to worry about it again. So we've got, we've got a lot of work going on. We have a contractor who's come in with a semi who started to move trees out in their entirety, entirety, and that's going to take a while. He filled up a semi today and I went down, took a look and couldn't tell even made a dent. Got a lot of trees down. Probably going to have the park closed for a minimum of two more weeks. We'll just see how the progress of the work goes. We've got a crew coming in here later dated, might be as early as this Saturday, but we've got the community service folks lined up to come in and, you know, make a straight line and walk the whole park picking up debris. It isn't just the downed trees and the lines and everything, it's the debris that's strung clear through the park. I do not want to walk through there wearing flip flops right now. So we've got some work to do, but you folks are doing a great job going through the city. Any other questions for Randy? Thank you, sir.
How was the closure affecting the Little, the Diamonds baseball team? People still trying to park up there?
No, I think the Little League, the youth baseball league have been working with Ted and Lenny and I, making sure the Pony League and the major league fields are still open. They're on separate electrical service, so their electric is fine. The T-ball field, on the other hand, is part of the city park and was damaged.
Took a rock and?
Yeah, it, it took the backstop, a tree came down, or limb came down on the backstop, damaged some of the bleachers and that. So T-ball games have been shifted to Fancler Park, and so the T-ball games will be held at Fancler Park right now until we get that cleaned up, but as far as vehicle traffic, Andy, is, I think we're okay because we've got the barricades up. I think we're still having some challenges with foot traffic, so.
People going through it?
Yeah, so it, you know, just remind everybody they've got to stay out of that park for right now until we can clean it up.
Well, yeah, and then too, we, like I say, we've got a general contractor, we've got some pretty heavy equipment in there now too, he's working with loading stuff, so it's not a, it's not a park right now, it is a construction area. Does the parks programs are?
Monday.
Do they know?
Uh, yes.
I know it's going to be closed two weeks at least.
Yeah. The park board will be meeting on Thursday to hear their alternative plan, to make sure that they have an alternative plan.
Did you get an email to that?
I sent it to the board, I'm not sure if you got it though.
What is it, five, six o'clock?
Six o'clock, Thursday.
I'm unavailable. Okay.
Is, sorry, did, did Nixel send out something on that, or can they? I know there's certain things you can and can't send out.
We did not notify them about the park closure to send that out.
I didn't know if we could, because I think quite a few people are connected that way and at least they'll get on their cell phone. If we can't, we can't remember what you can and can't send out.
I'm not sure. We can call and ask if that's something they could send out for us. We've had, we've got it on our, both, Tom and Andy both have posted it on their Facebook pages for the Fire Department, Police Department. We put it on the city website, so we try to get it out as best as we can, and I, I didn't think to call Nick to call and see if they could.
Did you talk to last, maybe I'll put something in paper?
Yeah, he had it in his article.
And I'll be mentioning it on the radio again tomorrow, so.
We're trying to get it out as quick, as best we can, but it's really just folks that I don't read the paper, I don't listen to the radio, I don't watch TV.
They certainly ought to be able to read a sign on the barricade. I would say we've got all of the entrances with barricades and signage. Now, you know, we have, does this preclude having some kids on skateboards or something come in? No, that's happened once in a while, but as soon as we see them, I think our police officers have handled it. I've seen a group of them, it's, hey, you guys know this is closed, this is not a, not a playground right now. Oh, okay, all right, and, you know, there's no problem, leave right away, but I think we've done about as thorough a job of getting that communicated to folks. Just, just don't want anybody to get hurt, it's a lot of danger places right now. Like we've got electric poles that are broken laying over it too, a lot of damage. One of the pavilions, we think, had a little problem, it's got a tree bricked across the roof, one of the smaller pavilions. The big pavilion didn't take on any damage in Nanatom Mountain, didn't take on any damage, so we were fortunate there.
But we lost the concession stand.
We lost the concession stand, you can't even tell where it was. It was, it was kind of on its last leg.
Yeah, it is pretty well obliterated, it's by one tree that's out the inside.
Storms, that thing.
Uh-huh.
Right on, right on the inside.
You know, you know, if you guys saw any of the cars in town, the truck that got hit by a tree, how fortunate we were, none of those trees went in the direction of someone's bedroom at four o'clock in the morning. Very, very fortunate. Okay, Lenny? Man of the hour, here it comes.
All right, I must talk about you, you've already talked about it.
Well, I wanted to make sure we covered it all, covered it, Lenny. I think you did that first time.
Picking up the rush.
Did I pick up yard debris, bags, leaves, cleaned storm drains, fixed the manhole on Third and Pontiac, the riser ring that sits down in there, raised it up, it cracked, it kept flipping up as the passing traffic hit it, so we got that fixed. Blacktops the poles in various locations around the city. Housing on the pump truck, water truck, it broke, we got that taken apart, and Tom brought the new one today, so we'll get that back together as we get the things cleaned up as we don't really need the water or anything. We finally got the streets open, the fallen trees, and worked on the trees and brush lane and the roads and the hardest set areas. The crews worked overtime and worked on Memorial Day, as you said. They, I can't say enough about how people's helped us out and how they, I didn't plan for them to work on Memorial Day, but they called and offered and they go above and beyond. And the stuff will have for the street.
Well, I'm going to help you a little bit. I didn't, I didn't cover everything. E and B, we'd like to thank E and B for helping us out along, and Matt Street, New Holland, came in and ran a piece of equipment, brought a piece of equipment. E and B's, I continue to help aside, I got a hurt from them this afternoon, they have located a backhoe with clam, actually they call it?
Yeah.
That will be coming in very soon to help us kick the stuff up.
That's what we can use in our load, that's what we can.
It's not a hook, it's a clam they call it, so.
Right.
Appreciate that. Any thoughts as to how quickly we will be through the community? Or you're going to have a better look at that by two, two weeks? Couple of weeks also, for a big dent. Okay. It should be noted, and we've talked this over with Councilman Smith, the, the rules on, on the trees that are down, if they're in your property, if they're on your property, they've fallen and damaged something, or they're laying in your backyard or whatever, contact your insurance carrier. That's where the homeowner's insurance comes into play. If they were in the street, that's what we're working on.
Well, even the ones that are in the tree lawn, if they fall on your house, we don't do them.
Well, it's an act of God, you get your, you have to have your insurance people involved, so there is a need to call your insurance company if you're in that, in that mode. We have a lot of folks in town who are doing work, a lot of the tree services and such that are doing work, and some of them, some of them were familiar with and some of them were not. There are some folks from out of town that have come into town that people have contracted, but we're doing, doing a good job coordinating.
They, for the most part, they've got Main Street cleaned up today and they made, for the most part, got all Jefferson cleaned and started on Pontiac, what's left on Jefferson, just the bigger stuff that needs to be moved with the loader because it's all laying on top of the brush, and it's kind of hard for one guy to pull his guts out and try to get, get the brush out of there, so I just ask if they cut, cut some stuff to make sure they keep the big stuff separated from the, the smaller branches and stack it in a nice neat fashion, and that just makes our job a lot easier.
Sure. We should mention too that all, all hands at the city have been on board. Want to thank you guys, Marcus, you, thank you, and Derek's not here right now, but we've got a member of the Water Department going around and cleaning storm sewers.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we had that terrible rain last night, but with this debris and everything, your storm sewers get blocked up pretty quickly.
Quite a bit of that.
Yeah, so we've got the, got them out cleaning, got some help to do that from the Water Departments, appreciate all of that. Also, it would, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention the great job that Duke did. They, they attacked, we coordinated the first day with Duke, they attacked in force, you know, the carotid sample of their outside contractors, plus an armada of tree trimmers, about eight trucks, and one, he came in and started to work right away.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and Lenny's been right in the middle of all that, good job.
Being an old timey now.
Yeah, I know.
But to answer your question, we'll bug, bug in with that tomorrow if we get down a little bit earlier with my plans, we'll be in there area. Is your area smaller, I would say? As your area is smaller, I would say a day, we can knock all that out in one day.
Well, we're appreciative, appreciative.
And the damage to sidewalks and such, we're not at a stage yet where we can even evaluate all that, we just have to clean up first.
Yeah.
And we've got people asking us already, when are you gonna plant a tree for me? That's gonna be down the road too, we'll, we'll have to evaluate all of that. Tree Board is going to be immediately discussing that.
Yeah, I was gonna report some stuff on the park, but it's, it don't, it's.
All your park personnel now are part of the cleanup group, now they're, they're on the streets.
Yeah, driving trucks, hauling the garage, whatever.
Is all this staying in town?
I appreciate that.
All the cleanup, the tree cleanup and everything, does that stay in town then, do we take that out to the?
We're taking it out to our place.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point, Gary, the very first thing that's happened, we got a whole idea. And they immediately gave us a sixty day burn permit, so they didn't start burning, and told us, if you need more than sixty days, just call us. And we received that writing today.
Yes.
But as we burn, we, we monitor it, so we got all hands on deck right now, get it, and it picked up, and.
Well, we've, we've dug a huge pit out there.
Yeah, we got a big pit.
And we'll burn as we, as we go on. I believe County is burning now, they've started burning.
I'm sure they are, yeah.
We haven't started burning yet.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting to dry it out a little bit, wet, wet, wet stuff.
But I'd, I'd also like to thank the people that are out there getting up, excuse me, getting up firewood and profiting from getting wood rather than just taking it to be burned in the pit, you know.
Well, there's a lot of wood to be had, yeah, a lot of wood to be had, okay. While you're still up, I'd like to mention that our fire department was called out last night for the tornado.
Correct, yeah, we sent two trucks down to assist Macy and Ackerman in that part of the county.
And some folks trapped in a basement, right?
Correct, that was the initial call, and Macy couldn't, couldn't get to them from their department, so they, they called us so we could come in from the other side. Report that no one was injured, they were just shaken, and, and you can imagine, but.
You know, you don't think about that, they tell you, go to the basement, tornado, well, if your house is taken away, you may be trapped in the basement. And that's, that happened last night, so good job, G. So far, again, nobody hurt.
Yeah, that's, things can be replaced, but bodies can't.
Right, right. Any questions for Lenny? Thank you, Lenny.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lenny. Marcus? Are you here? Now, before we get started, I have to make another announcement, Marcus is a brand new father. Little baby girl. Well, has, has a new addition.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You have a new addition. I'm Miley James.
Well, I got a girl.
Yep.
All right, in my lab, I had normal plank testing, I finished my lab analysis report for the month. Also finished my lab application, land application report, installed a new effluent meter, we calibrated all our flow meters. In the plant, we installed new effluent, effluent and influent chart recorder, we cleaned it up and all pit covers for the summer months. We filled drying beds, our backhoe, bad timing, is still up at West Side Sales getting fixed after our hundred point inspection. We are doing training on our new system for Allen pumping into our tanks for phosphorus removal. We delivered the new pump to Airbag Station B, that'll be put in within the next two weeks. We began our summer months ground keepings, we sold some equipment in the city auction finally, so. I think Scott has one more, or is that gone?
No, I didn't look.
The.
Was the trailer?
Yeah.
I obviously didn't.
I didn't look.
It is gone.
Is it gone, there you go.
We had Coach Walshman at the plant that set up cameras and unlocked systems, so he's gonna come back, I believe, next time he's here. My monthly MRO and DMR reports right here are complete, and collection of locates, which we had a million open possibly. Blackwater Complex is now hooked up to the lift station, we repaired boat launch bathrooms after Duke went through our airbag line. Lucas Street, the lift station in front of the project for iron and metal is now seventy percent complete, they should be done by the beginning of this week. We assisted the water department a couple.
That's the, that's the service out there that needed to be.
Yes. We assisted the water department on a couple weeks, we're continuing our maintenance and our sanitary equipment. We cleaned Blackwater School View Arbor Woods and our eleven streets lift stations, we had sixteen backup calls and then were called by the city. We replaced our safety harness for our lift truck, and we restocked our repair lint and couplers for our main brakes.
I don't know, was storm sewer cleaned up?
Yeah, I was here until eleven thirty last night. Obviously, with the storm, we lost power, four seventeen, I was, came in at four thirty, and we, I was here until eleven thirty that night.
Those were pretty nice pictures you sent, they printed pretty good over on Main Street. Is that after we cleaned up?
That was when I went to check the main one on Main Street.
Really? They printed pretty good. We just got a lot of water at one time. Any questions for Marcus? Thank you, sir. Derek is on vacation downtown. John's out here going. He gave you a written report, I'll go through the digs where you're quickly here, that they worked on. They replaced the fire hydrant at fifteen twenty seven Van Crouft Avenue, replaced the curb stop at nine sixteen Fulton Avenue, replaced the outside meter pit at five oh eight Jefferson Street. Replaced the fire hydrant across from Tweedledee's Restaurant, replaced the outside meter pit at two twenty eight West Eighth Street, replaced the curb stop at six oh four Main Street, the dugout, dugout. Made a new one inch tap at nine sixteen Fulton Avenue, made a new one inch tap at three six nineteen Manitowoc Park. He had five callouts. Okay, going down to the committee's reports, Harry, you had to tell us about RDP.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Things are looking a little better downtown, we've had some beautification projects, hopefully most of you have noticed, we've had, had sixteen bike racks installed. Wanted definitely to shout out to Craig's Welding, they installed all those, and bore the concrete, quite a project for them, and they donated all that time. Of course, they also manufactured them, a modern material, powder coated them in Hoffman's Body Shop, sandblasted them, so that was a complete local project that we were able to do for roughly about two hundred dollars a bike rack.
Explain to me how those racks.
You just put a bike up alongside it.
Chain your bike to it.
Right, chain your bike to it.
I got you. It's all, it's really. It's hitching rail for a bike.
Yeah, it's not meant to hold the rack, like, as much as, it's just a place to put them and keep them from pulling up against buildings and leaning against bike rack, you know, using the benches as a place to lock up. They could basically put a chain around it and lock your bike up.
Okay.
That's where it was, it's not meant to, like your typical school rack where you hold, you know, you put your tires in or anything.
That's, that's what I was asked, and how in the world can you use that? And I got to looking at it, and I thought, well, this, this is kind of like on the back of a car, maybe.
No, it doesn't, it's really nothing but it's something you can throw a padlock around and lock your bike without.
Lock your bike to it.
Lock your bike to it, and you can't pull it all the way. I think they look really nice, and they definitely are gonna help protect the benches a little bit, the way we kind of positioned them to help keep some of the skateboarders off of them. There's also been a, some of the abandoned buildings, worked at a art project, Christine Walsh got with the schools and the kids drew flower pictures. Bryce Harst, he scanned hundreds of those photos in and then put it on vinyl, and they put that up this weekend, and so now it's on two or three of the buildings downtown, just really brightened up the.
Looks really nice, yeah.
The empty, added a lot of color that I really, you know, I had to visualize how that was gonna come out, and really came, really happy how that came out.
Have you had the cooperation from all the building owners to?
Yeah, we had enough, I mean, there, there's more we could do at this point, it was just a mother of funds to print all that vinyl and stuff, but we did what we could come up with so far, maybe there'll be some more. We did send out fundraising mailing to all the area businesses, basically hoping to raise some funds to help fund RDP for, for mostly the funds are needed for the events we hold downtown. And we're kind of exploring trash cans now too, we're gonna try to get some quotes on that and maybe see if we can get those made locally as well. We don't really know, it seems a little more complicated than the bike rack, but it'd be nice to, to kind of start working towards that part of it.
Please include Lenny in that design concept, because he's the guy that has to see that they're emptied.
Yeah.
About trash cans.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's something black, and we've talked about maybe painting the ones we have or whatever, but there are some nice looking ones that, you know, if we have to replace any, and hopefully we would not buy that style. Get something that's different, I guess, we're trying to make a decision as to exactly the look we want, something that's gonna be functional, keep the stow out, but still.
One thing we've found, these trash cans that we have, the advantage of them, they weigh a ton.
Yeah, they do, because I've used a few of them.
Actually, that's, we, we invested in that type, that same type for the walking trail, because trash barrels were ending up in the creek, being thrown into the creek. Well, hadn't been any of these thrown in the creek.
Yeah, we're trying to position them now, they're the benches a little bit to help, they're against your skateboarders, railing the benches. Flower planters, I don't know what you guys think, but I think they're wonderful, they really look nice, they're gonna really look good once the flowers start dripping down the sides of them. And of course, they're self-watering, so it's gonna, I think the flowers are gonna do really well, it's, if we ever stop raining, we might figure out, figure out that is an advantage. They're all planted, yeah, she's put a trellis in them, so there's flowers crawling up, and then there's gonna be stuff dripping down on the sides, so it's all set with that.
We contracted Kimberly with the city.
I saw her out there.
Yeah, she's, she's our gardener for the city, she's taking, we bought the pots and she's planted them, and she's also taking care of the seven gardens, including the large one there in front of the city park. She's taking care of the landscaping here at the city hall and also over at the senior city, she's taking care of that, so she's keeping quite challenged.
She's doing a great job, you know, she was, when we had, Thursday morning when nothing had power, we stationed one of her gals up in the front window of the, on the DME side, just to let people know, the back doors. There, Kim Land's going down the street, eight o'clock that morning, straightening up any, any damage to those plots, that way.
Well, she's taking it to her heart, and I knew that, that would be the case, she's a good one for it.
We would like to get a cleanup project where we can blow the sidewalks, all, you know, get a couple backpack blowers, we've got some volunteers who'll do all that, it's kind of nice to coordinate that with the street department, so they can come along, maybe the following day. You know, clean, clean the streets, but, because it just blows into the street, and then the next day blows back on the sidewalk again, so, I don't know, you guys are jammed up right now, but.
It's like Wednesday or Thursday will end up in Akron.
Thursday will end up in Akron.
Whatever, just let me know when, you know, when you guys got to a point where you can get the streets wet or out again, and maybe we can get some guys to just walk the streets and get everything into the street.
We can do that.
Another thing I'd like to maybe at least have some discussion on, or think, kicking around, is maybe creating a bike lane down the sidewalks, right, right behind the benches, you know, not away from the building fronts, but giving, if we created a designated area where people that are on a bike would more safely go down Main Street without being in danger of, you know, parallel parking cars backing out and stuff, but also not, those sidewalks are very wide, especially on Main Street. We could designate a two or three foot lane for people to, to ride your bike on the sidewalk.
Now, that's gonna take an ordinance change, right now there's an ordinance against riding bikes.
Right.
I, one, one thing about that, the way the curbs are, you'd almost have to have the bike lane in line with, with the ramps, so you could, you know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah.
So I, I think hopefully long term, as we do a few more projects downtown, get the storm water and all that done, and we can then change the way the downtown is, I think we can move the cars out a little bit and create that lane, that way they're on street level, not going up, down, up, down, up, down.
Right, I just think in the interim, until we can get to that point of a major, I mean, I'd be, I'd love to see bike lanes, obviously in the street.
I'd love to see some bikes downtown, I haven't seen any at the, at the racks or anything yet, so, but, so let's see what happens there.
We've got a lot to deter them, but.
Yeah, we do need to change ordinance.
Which was far.
For the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Well, I think you better advertise that, I just didn't know what we're, think about it right now, you've got benches on one side of the sidewalk, you've got the pedestrian traffic going into the stores on the other side of the sidewalk, where are you gonna put the bicycles, because you're not gonna have some interference.
Plus, you have restaurants that have seating outside on the side.
Seating outside, yeah, that's gonna take some engineering.
But there is interest among the locals for something like, something more pro bike, like the bike rentals. I did a Facebook survey poll, and the majority of folks, and I'll have a more detailed report typed up, but the majority of folks were against certain bike rentals, like the Lime Bikes, because of seeing them everywhere. But Warsaw, I kept hearing a lot about Warsaw and the white bikes, I don't know who the company is, but I'm interested in finding out more. But as to Harry, what his point was, a lot of people said, well, they don't want you to ride bikes, but now we have bike racks, so are we supposed to use the bike racks? And there's a lot of mention about a bike lane, and I think you weren't looking for a permanent solution right now, you're just looking for something to promote maybe more bicycling.
Well, just tell them where they can go.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's very, you know, this is very, there is really no way of knowing where to go.
Yeah, you have to ride the street.
Yeah, and it's not safe to really ride the street behind, you know, cars that are parked at anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can cross the main street, but you can't ride that main street safely.
So anyway, I think, I think if you went right behind the, because the bike racks are kind of lining up with any, any of the garden tree lawns and flower pots and all that, if you went just on the, you know, towards the buildings on the other side of those bike benches, you could create a two or three foot lane that would be a safe, that would at least tell somebody if they're riding a bike where they should be. And then when you get to the crosswalk, she'd only ever go.
What do your merchants say? What are your?
I have to hold them all.
Don Peterson, your Lance, what, I mean, you got a whole bunch of people who have skin and McCain down there, who have stores, storefronts, those are the people we want to hear from.
Sure. We're, we're meeting with, the EV committee is doing a business retention program with Purdue Extension Office right now. So we'll be meeting with most of the downtown business owners here in the next two months, going over, in search to have listed questions, survey questions, we have to gather information, that's something that we can ask them.
Yeah, if somebody has an outdoor dining area, like Don does, or outdoor dining, you just stop the bike lane, prior to that, they're, they're still gonna be a place, people are gonna be a walk through, maybe a sign that says, please walk bicycle, or something like that, in a narrow spot, but. That's, I've seen that at Max and Tucky, Culver, they have an area like that, they still allow bikes through, you have to walk your bike right by that congested area, but.
Have you considered if, if bike rental type thing were to come to town or bike sharing, have you thought about a location, I mean, one that keeps being brought up is the, the trail, of course. But I know it depends on what kind of program would be implemented, you know, whether or not they have to dock it. I think anything less might be hard to get some support for, you know, just laying it anywhere, but I didn't know, have you thought about that?
Well, I think we're all anxiously love to see Dick will play extended into town, and, you know, that's, that whole project that stalled with the wetlands area.
That's what I was recently.
So. So, um, if they could get through that hurdle, and we can get, I mean, where the current trailhead is out, Harsh after Mark's property or whatever, it's probably not the best spot, but if we could get it, you know, either on Eighth Street or Ninth Street, um, where we're gonna have a official trailhead in the building and all that kind of stuff, that would be a great place to have, you know, maybe consider something like that.
So was it, was that project dead in the water, or is it something, because I, of course, wasn't, I wasn't here when we were working on that.
Well, I don't know if it'd be dangerous about it, but I think basically what happened is when Duke sent those big poles, um, those big metal poles through the, the right away, there was this one area where they had, they changed directions and they brought a guide wire down, and it was right in the area where we were going to have the, the extension of the trail. So that forced the trail, you can't ride the trail under any guide wire. So, um, that forced the trail off down into a wetlands area. So they had the big survey done to see how much impact that was gonna have on that wetlands, and they determined that they would have to do a boardwalk of some type, well, their cost of that thing was crazy, what it's done to the cost of the project, and so now the whole, now they're looking at maybe acquiring some land, some private land to, to run the trail on and get around that wetlands area. It's not a very big wetlands area, but.
Who's in charge of that?
Terry, Terry, Terry.
Terry leads. Basically go through the wetlands, it's almost eighty dollars.
Yeah, for just a small site.
Yeah.
So, uh, we gotta have to figure out something different.
Any questions for Harry?
Somebody want to buy those here?
I think that's it. Any questions? Thanks, Harry.
Aight.
And David's not here. Like Manito, uh, area planning, Mason, Harry, I have nothing to report, this will make a very important. Fedco.
Councilman Pittman. Fedco met May second, um, we had the youth center group present their plan. We got a lot of details about it, and they are looking at the old Vastinol building, um.
Are they coming to see us in some point in time, Bruce?
Do you want them on the agenda?
Well, I mean, they went to the county. You probably wouldn't, I don't know about that, but I mean, we ought to know.
I don't want to continue.
Why would they go to the county to come to, come and give money? They didn't know that was gonna happen. I think we probably ought to reach out and invite them.
Okay, so anyway, they're um, they're planning to look in for um, five ten thousand dollar year commitments from private organizations, um, uh, three year commitment, so thirty thousand dollar investment from the private organizations, uh, they figured that they can operate at fifty thousand a year, and they want to shore up three, three years at least. And then, once you get through that, then, you know, the community will have the time to figure out if it, if it, you know, something everyone wants to keep around, and then, you know, they would be looking for continued funding. So far, I think they have almost eighty percent of what they need. I think they're looking for one more, one more donor. I know the county kicked in, uh, five thousand a year for three years. And there are a couple of private companies, and then the local churches banded together as taking one of those. So, um, they're well, well on their way, um, they just need, I think, one more person to step to the plate to cover that ten thousand a year for three years. Um, I mentioned last time about a Blackadder Committee. Uh, we've got a Blackadder Committee, um, and they're looking at the Blackadder property, which is about thirty acres, that can be developed. So we're working on a strategy to get that um, developed and marketed. Um, there's a conversation about possibly purchasing another seventeen acres in the area, um, so that we could get, develop it into twenty-five. Last time that was discussed, the price of the acreage was eleven thousand an acre, not sure what it is. Right now, the proposed road connection, Blackadder Drive to Indiana twenty-five is about two hundred and ninety thousand. So, we're looking at ways to cut that cost, get that down. Um, but the other question is, you know, how's the restructuring of thirty-one gonna affect the attractiveness of the Blackadder property? So that's ongoing. There's also a housing committee uh, put together. Um, one thing that Fulton kind of has a lack of is um, housing. Trying to bring a lot of people in to fill the open jobs, and we don't have a lot of housing available. Uh, new houses, the report on new houses going up is pretty slim, not, there's not a lot of new houses going in right now. So, Terry's got his group of people from the county, some realtors, um, talking with Alex Berlin and Tyler Anderson also. There was a group looking at our area, um, from Bloomington for a possible assisted living housing project, that's in the works. Uh, of course, we all know about Schneider Electric and Peru closing. I don't know that it's taken place yet, but there was a job fair that was gonna be put together for those employees. I didn't, I did not see an email, did you see an email go around about that date yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so they're still working on that. Uh, Sally's did get their extension from the Board of Zoning on a timeframe for paving the parking lot, so they're here and open. Dean Foods, Terry had a lead, uh, Side Selector was looking for a food processing facility. He contacted Brad Cashall, again, was told the building's not available, so he forwarded the lead to Jim Tid in Miami County and Jerry Chavez in Marshall County. They both have stuck buildings that might fit the bill for him. Terry went back to Dean Foods and asked if an offer from the county or city would help, and he hasn't heard as of this time. Of course, Jackson, trying to get the concrete crusher approved, they did, oh, out there by, where's that, landfill? By the landfill, so that's, that's going in. The phase two on Indiana property was delivered, week of our meeting. Uh, looks like that purchase will be going, going forward, and that's um.
The Nesset property?
Yes, Rochester Metal Products purchasing that. I haven't heard a report on it, but the theater group was meeting with Neil Shepherd about the Marquee. Y'all know LA Hazen, well, this building, so he, he has a lot of work to do with that, so we turned them on to, uh, I think the same grant that Harry got for his place, to try and get that, that finished up. And one interesting fact that we, that was thrown out at the uh, the meeting, the Rochester Schools has recently given out one hundred thousand dollars locally in scholarships. In perspective, I think the number from Indianapolis was eighty-seven thousand, is what they've put out in their schools. So, we're a pretty small community, and we'd be able, I mean, that's, this is all local, local money going to students from our high school. Pretty interesting, and we're, we live in a pretty good community, so. That's my report. I'm sure you guys have questions.
A couple additions that have just come about. First of all, Harry, you know, did the uh, Pine Theater, do they have any storm damage? We've heard all sorts of.
Well, I've heard there's, the roof, the roof had rolled up, but I don't know.
That was when we heard that there was some roof, severe roof damage done. But uh, you don't have any.
I don't have any heard of it.
I haven't heard anything.
I have pictures of it.
You got pictures of it? There was damage?
Yeah, there was damage and enough damage that they were concerned about leaking. I don't know if they got it covered up or not.
Dean's building, uh, we've had an inquiry from the manufacturer, and what bash will remain nameless, that has a, a real interest coming to Rochester and a real interest in that building. So we have connected the president of that company with Brad Cashall to, and then it's unrelated to the food industry, so that might, that might strike a better chord than Dean's. So that, that's going on right now. It's just a addition to your, your report. Any questions for Councilman Pittman?
I have one. Do we know the number of vacant buildings downtown?
I don't have that on the table, I have the way to get that.
That'd be awesome. I don't know if you could just do Main Street or include some of the side streets, I'm sure they're not in your number, but.
Uh, probably be the corridor, so you probably talk in Main Street and then at least in the street. What's, what's your idea of that?
Uh, progress. Gotta start with the benchmark.
Well, I know, you talked about, you can fill those buildings.
I'd love to see them off, but.
Aren't you on that? We, we've, we've got those numbers somewhere. You're on that committee, aren't you, Mason?
I know the flagpole, one less we can go.
It's not the corridor, but yeah.
It's, but it's important to me.
Yeah, it's important.
Look at me. That's very important.
Yeah, I think there's a committee from, from RDP that's working on that.
I wasn't sure which group to ask.
That right area, there's an RDP.
Yep. Yeah, Mises Chairman, I agree.
Okay, uh, redevelopment commission, Terry is not here, uh, we've got a meeting Thursday morning. On the agenda, we've talked about the completion of the road, patching drive up to Southland Town, working towards that and connecting some dots. We've got an engineering firm involved in it. The next process is to uh, explore grants, and we come up with the cost to do that, and we've been talking to the stakeholders out there, property owner plus some businesses. We would hope that the grant we wish to go after, we could get the matching from the, the stakeholders' contributions. So that's uh, that's part of that in, and we'll also be talking about the trail. To see what progress Terry has made with a, an alternative direction rather than through the wetlands. So, we'll have an update on that.
So that is part of the redevelopment?
Okay. Okay, Park Board, Mason, I was out of town and have not received the minutes yet. I didn't make the Park Board meeting either. Lenny, wanna tell us a little bit about the Park Board meeting?
Uh, this, basically this um, Lori gave a report on the pool, and they was getting ready to open and stuff, and general stuff going on in the park in the moment and stuff like that.
Yeah, it was BTS before the storm, so.
Yeah.
Planning for the pool and the park program.
Basically just discussing the, the coming budget meeting, what they're gonna do with that.
Right. Okay. Uh, Rochester BZA and Council on Aging, Councilman Smith.
Yes, sir. Council on Aging actually did not meet last Monday due to some uh, scheduling problems, but a couple of things to mention. Uh, the senior games were held last week, uh, and I.
Not gone, we missed it.
We did. We would have won that sack race this year too.
Practice.
Yeah, I know. Received a new van also last week. They call it the medium transit van. I'm not sure how many passengers that is, but um, also for those that would be interested, the golf tournament, the annual fundraising golf tournament will be held Saturday, June eighth for Council on Aging, and month of April, three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven trips were made.
Three thousand four hundred and sixty-six trips for April?
Sixty-seven, yes.
Sixty-seven, sorry, sixty-seven for April, wow.
BZA met last Wednesday night. There were two items on the agenda. We talked a little bit about Rochester Metal. They were there asking for variants as they are constructing, they want to construct a new shed for uh, truck repairs, and that variance was granted, and so they'll actually be adding another building there as well. The other item was uh, property owner that wanted to separate into two units, or one unit, and that was allowed as well. In addition, a couple of revenue numbers for you, the month of April, the city building permits, electrical and plumbing registrations total one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, which brings our year-to-date revenue out of Casey's office for three thousand three hundred eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
That's for electrical plumbing permits.
No, no, that would be everything, isn't it, right? Building permits, everything. Correct. Not just electrical plumbing.
City building permits, electrical and plumbing registrations.
For all of them?
Okay, any questions, any questions, uh, concludes Thursday morning. Solid waste, animal adoption, uh, Chase?
Uh, animal adoption, we're having a rummage sale on, actually, three days, but also they're still asking for donations. I'll pass this along. If anybody has anything they'd like to donate, um, just we have a suggested list here.
When is the rummage sale?
Uh, it's on June seventh, June eighth, and June ninth, and it's at the Orange Chairhouse. And then there is admission for like, the first day is two dollars, the second day is a dollar, and then the third day is no, it's free admission.
Yeah, that's so good. Proceeds will build towards, correct.
All of it.
What kinds of things are they looking for, Chase?
Are you.
Yeah, you can, you can look at it. There's quite a bit of, yeah, items on there that you can.
Anything and everything?
Yeah, really. The other thing was, Shout It Heads, the center received their funds yet?
No, because we haven't received the request letter. They have to send us a letter in order for us to.
Has Janet gotten one?
Um, Melinda had sent me an email after March, and I told Chris just this morning to send me in, I reminded her to do that, she needs to send us a letter. We normally don't this person till June.
I'm driving, okay.
June is on.
Okay.
So, to clarify that, anybody from the community could donate for this?
Correct, yep, anyone.
How's things going for the next year?
Yeah.
There's certain days that they're accepting, so it's not just any day.
Does it have the, does that have the donation dates on there that we could read out loud? What are the donation dates?
May twenty-fifth, ten, ten AM to two PM, May twenty-sixth, two PM to five PM, June first, ten AM to two PM, June second, two PM to five PM, and June fifth, three PM to six PM. I have a potion for a second.
Solid waste?
Solid waste, yes. Um, so, since the last board meeting, the recycling center shipped ninety-nine point eight tons of recyclables with a value of four thousand eight hundred and six dollars thirty-four cents for the month of March two thousand nineteen. County Land District received thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety tons of waste in twenty-three working days for a daily average of one thousand five hundred and ninety-six tons per day. Fulton County accounted for six thousand twenty-nine tons. The rest of the unit contributed thirty thousand six hundred and sixty-three tons. There was seventeen point four more tons of out-of-state collected, and the host fee for the month was forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Forty-seven thousand?
Five thirty-seven, five thirty-two, twenty-one. So the county host fee for the month of March was fifteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents. Owen already started on the building, so he's decided to go ahead and uh, get our, the building recited, so they started on the backside. I don't know how far they've gotten so far up and over there recently to look, but uh, it looks a lot, a lot better.
over there recently to look, but, uh, it looks a lot, a lot better. And, uh, we had a couple extra dumpsters of the, that we sold to Mike's Trash.
Questions for Chase? Thanks, Chase. Tree Board and EMS, Brian?
Tree Board, Matt, earlier in the month.
Sure.
Our next meeting, it's gonna be a little busier.
Oh, I think it probably will be, yeah.
Good news is that all of the trees around the two thousand and eighteen removal list were done, only this one.
Well, if they weren't, they are now.
Not necessarily, you know? I've heard through, actively through some people, that trees that's home, and axed parked on them, still standing.
Let me, let me tell you about that, and then I think there was one in the newspaper from the park. It's interesting, uh, there were trees sheltering trees that were taken, good trees that were taken out, and then the bad tree's still standing, but it no longer has a full back back locking for it anymore.
Yeah.
So, we've gotta get those out.
I had a couple of questions about, sort of addressed earlier, what if you had tree, tree lawn, but down the property, or the street, or whatever, that's a, you know...
Call them as insurance.
I told that person, contact the insurance company, and then we'll see whatever we need to do, you know, after that.
Contact their insurance company.
The, uh, in keeping with the, uh, Tree City USA designation that we have, there was a fourth grade field trip on May twentieth, they planned to attend, uh, informational thing for the fourth graders. I can be an update on that.
We did the arbor, the proclamation at the same time, with that, that event.
Okay. And there's a list of new trees for removal, or, um, trimming up this year, but stuff that can change. And then down the road, and then there's gonna be replant the tree lawn, uh, maybe some homeowners who got shy, don't mind they've done, go ahead and sidewalks, and some of these houses, so I don't know what. But I think we're also getting too late season to plants, so they might wait until fall anyways to do height, so that may be good timelines.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely gonna be phases involved in all of this, first and foremost is all cleanup.
Sure.
Then the evaluation of damage to sidewalks, and tree lawn, and what have you, and then the process of, will we be planting a tree where that one came out, or, but we'll, we'll also include the homeowners in that decision-making process, too.
I'll turn to anybody who's submitted a request for it, so we go into the queue and wait, see, uh, maybe not apply it to a big element of corporate space, or, I don't know, label, to more appropriate space, so, so look at that. I think you said you, you could be there the next meeting, or when it would be?
Well, both would be there.
Okay. And that's all I have for Tree Board.
Okay, about EMS?
No idea, I'm not sure if we're gonna have a meet again. As if the Luther people who set it up, and they, they report, so, uh, as far as I know, Pat Unger is still there, Tom?
Correct, yeah. I think they're just gonna give quarterly, but it's more of a, uh, just kind of an information, kind of a run data sheet, they're, they really don't, I mean, they're contracted by the county now, so, I mean, it's just kind of a courtesy get-together anymore, is what it is.
But we're, we're well past, we're, we should be for our second quarterly meeting.
Should be coming up soon. I, I don't have a date from Pat yet.
Well, yeah, I'll tell, I'll tell you, we haven't had any communication from him, so if there's a meeting, I'll report.
I'll, I'll mention it to him, I'll, I'll see what his intentions are, and get back with him.
Now, our contract is low in funding, that is all, that's in?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Low in funding, that's all ended?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they still paying?
Uh, what year are we on?
Is the county still paying?
Yeah.
No, I, I, no, I don't think so.
I don't know how many years, I thought it was three years.
It was, and it's, it's expired.
It's expired, okay.
So, we're, we're no longer obligated to pay.
When, when did our obligation end?
Um, last year, we go out, you know.
So we will fund that?
Okay, longer.
Okay.
We were participating in it, yeah.
County cars?
Yeah, it was for a certain period of time, and ended last year. Okay, any, uh, questions for Brian? Like I, yeah, like you said, I'm sure the next report will be interesting. Okay, uh, Councilman Garrett's not, sure, the Water Board meeting, basically, the majority of it was taken up with the, uh, the ordinance that you handled tonight. Okay, we have no ADA concerns, shot on, nothing, we've got ADA concerns over, yeah, yeah.
To be determined.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, any legal issues, Andy?
I'll mention a couple of things, we, uh, I did have some back and forth with the Tree Board.
Would you mind speaking up a little bit, I'm not sure if they get you?
I did have some back and forth with the Tree Board, uh, that Mike wrote a recommendation to the council about, uh, uh, modifying their ordinance a little bit, I mean, I guess, some of that maybe, maybe put on hold a little bit, even more immediate issues, but, uh, we also had a, some ordinance violations, uh, come up since last time, uh, one in particular, uh, was a couple of weeks ago, and when that kind of thing happens, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't come and report, but it's been a while since I've mentioned that. One of the things I do for the city is to, uh, take ordinance violations that, uh, the police have written up with clerk's office, we treat those much the same way you might treat a small claims case, it's a civil case, not a criminal case, and, uh, as is often the case, that show up for the initial hearing, and, uh, may decide to enter a rejudgment, we enter a rejudgment for a hundred dollar fine, plus the work costs, and, uh, depending on their ability to pay, might give them a six-year high base to get that paid, take care of. My, my goal over the years in dealing with the mayor, and the chief of police, is to, uh, make sure it gets their attention, a money-making enterprise for the city, uh, and generally, if someone is willing to, uh, agree to fine and acknowledge it, I'm less concerned with how quickly they can get it paid, more concerned with, uh, the fact that they'll admit to that. And there are some cases where they do not, and reschedule a short, and trial. It's been a little while since I've done more of those for the city, but I have, you have a few of those in here. And, uh, uh, there's one other thing I wanted to mention, but, uh, now it's Casey, but I wanted to mention those two.
I would ask you, I said you mentioned in the room.
No, no, I think those are the two I wanted to, oh, the, uh, I did have some, uh, additional communication about a passed, uh, grant, uh, the city had, uh, received and administered, that was the issue with Mr. Mayor that we, we talked about, some broader request to subordinate the city's existing lien for a passed no-interest kind of, uh, uh, loan program, and it's one of those, that some of those, some of the challenges of free money is remembering twenty years later how you got it and what your responsibilities for it were, and, uh, so those are the kind of questions.
Yeah. Councilman Clevinger asked me, while we were having one of the reports down here, the wings, et cetera, situation. We've had, uh, some emails flying back and forth, Casey and Terry, uh, stating that, uh, they have received their state permit now to, to break ground, uh, their, their, their holdup now is, they've got about five or six of these restaurants going in all, around us all over, and they're kind of working at it academically, uh, not getting too many, haven't started at one time, and they are certainly committed to, to go to work here per se. So, that's where that is. Uh, any other business to be brought forward from the council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so move to the second, and put a dozen paper. Thank you.